city council regular session and just note that this meeting is being held virtually and that all councilors will be participating accordingly. And good have a roll call, please.
Steve Clemmons.
Here.
Gary Lillard.
Here.
Korean Dudo.
Here.
Nicole Howard.
Here.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Here.
Justin Rock is absent.
Absent, but let if he will trust that he'll pop in here eventually. So when he does, we'll bring him into into the full. Um, let's see, we do have enough for quorum. We have five members. So that means we've we've got quorum status. Um, agenda approval should be okay. Um, we have a consent agenda with one item on it, and that is approval of the regular session minutes from October 7. And anybody have comments on that? Or do we move into a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
Right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oh, sorry. So how easily we fall back into, you know, virtual Stacy, could I please have roll call vote, please?
Steve Clemmons.
Yes. You're in the game, Mayor.
Gary Lillard.
Yes.
Korean Dudo.
Yes.
Nicole Howard. Nicole Howard, sorry.
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner.
Yes.
And Justin Rock is absent.
Robert, any public comments on non agenda related items?
We didn't receive any public comments on agenda or non agenda items.
Okay, all right.
That means don't keep asking you. Sorry, pardon me.
Stu, Stu, it's not. It's not the time for for staff reports.
Oh, my. Oh, I guess I'll push mute. My, my mistake. Hello, everybody.
Don't worry. Um, we have one item, public hearing, and that is first reading of the 2019 housing needs analysis. We've been a lot of conversation about this. We had a work session. Yeah, I'm guessing a while ago, might even been last year at this time, where the consultant came in and made preliminary presentation. But before we get into further discussion, I will open the public hearing and ask that the rules of order for the public hearing be read in their entirety. And I'm assuming that Stacy is going to do that.
Okay, these rules of order are applicable to the public hearing for the proposal to adopt a housing needs analysis, which will be incorporated into the LaGrande comprehensive plan ordinance 3208 series 2013 planning goal 10 housing. This is a legislative hearing, therefore councillor ex parte or pre hearing contact does not apply. The hearing will proceed as follows. The mayor will open the public hearing and request the staff report. The mayor will then accept written public testimony relating to the matter. Due to COVID-19 restrictions, only written testimony will be accepted and shall be read into the record during the hearing. There is a three minute time limit for testimony. The order of testimony this evening will begin with that of proponents, those in favor, followed by opponents, those opposed, and ending with those neutral to the ordinance being adopted. The meetings will be available for viewing via the city's scheduled charter communications channel 180 beginning at 6:00 PM on November 4, 2020, on the LaGrande live website at la grandalive.tv/city-events, or on the Eastern Oregon Alive TV Facebook page at facebook.com/EasternOregonAliveTV. The notice of this public hearing required that any person that wanted to submit written comments or questions in advance of the meeting had until 5:00 PM on Tuesday, November 3, 2020, to submit them to Michael Boquest via email at mboquest@cityoflagrand.org. The proceedings are being electronically recorded to be converted to written minutes. Members of the city council may ask questions of the staff at any time. Subsequent to deliberation, the mayor will close the hearing.
All right. So we've had a reading of the rules of order. And Mike, this is, this is up to you now. We have, that was quite the report.
Good. Well, I expect that you read the whole thing.
I read enough of it. Yeah, I read quite a bit of it and have some have at least one comment to speak, but go ahead.
Well, I'm gonna just give you, you know, the executive summary version of this anyway. So if you want to kind of follow along as best as possible, I'm on page two of 117 of the staff report, which has the general background facts.
Excuse me, Mike, is there a visual of it somehow? I'm at the beach right now. I didn't. I don't have it printed. I just I read it online, but I don't have anything printed in front of me.
Um, I don't know. I don't know if I could provide that. If I don't know, Brent can hook me up to share my screen, or, or if somebody else has that ability to so you could visually follow along.
It's on your email.
Pardon?
It's on your email.
Yeah, there's a link to the document.
No, I had it to the city. I went to the city site and linked it from there and got it from there. So I don't have it handy to me. So could somebody share theirs? Like, maybe Robert?
You see, I'm clicking on something. I don't know. Okay, you still there? Can you? Can you see anything?
Yes, I see it.
Okay, let me zoom in a little bit. Okay, so this is the just for that executive summary, I'm gonna try to flip through. So just try not to get too dizzy as I shoot through a bunch of pages. But so this started around 2018 with House Bill 4006. The state legislature passed this House bill, which identified cities throughout Oregon that were identified as being rent burdened, which is the 25% of their renter households spend more than 50% of their household income on rent. So that's the definition of the rent burden or severely rent burden. In that House bill, the legislature allocated some funding to the state Department of Land Conservation and Development, which provided funding assistance. I always call it a grant, but it's really not a grant. It's technical assistance for cities to do a housing needs analysis or other studies in order to identify what their true housing crisis is in their community, and and then start efforts to try to, I guess, overcome and resolve that. And so for us, we had a really outdated housing needs analysis. And so that's the grant funding that that we went after. Then we were awarded our grant in July of 2018. And by the time we got a consultant on board, we started our project in October. And we, the first thing we did is we formed a housing committee. And so I proactively stacked that committee with housing advocates that were experts in the that severe rent burdened housing need, a group of folks. And so the list of folks are on the screen here, but they're pretty much folks from all of our housing agencies that serve our local population. And anyway, and they guided the consultant through the whole process. A lot of the data that that we used for local numbers came from these agencies and the services that they provide. The some of the other data came from the census and HUD stuff. But but these agencies were instrumental in making, making sure we had an accurate data count of of need. And so I'm going to jump now to page 20 of 117. And this, this page provides a couple tables that are essentially summarize our entire housing need. And in this one page, we have a need over the next 20 years for 795 new dwelling units. And that need spans across pretty much every category you can imagine from the very low income housing all the way up to the higher end housing for executive folks that are recruited to our community, like the hospital and other places. And it includes rentals and homeownership. So the top table deals with the ownership component, and our greatest need is in that upper end housing for homeowners.
Excuse me, Michael.
Yes.
The page that you have that you're sharing is not reflecting what you're talking about.
It is not.
No, you're you're still on page number two.
I'm.
Oh, yeah, I was wondering about that.
Oh, okay. Thank you. How to change that on my screen here. So.
Just go back to your share and get.
So yeah, so it's the PDF document that you need to change the page on.
All right. Well, that's what I'm on is my PDF documents. I apologize. Let me, my controls all switch to a different screen on me when I.
So maybe stop sharing and reshare again.
Okay, a second. I gotta find my meeting controls here. So it says new share. I wonder if maybe it somehow just quit sharing. Can you see it now?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, I apologize. Okay, so this table, so the top table is the owner occupied housing needs. And there's really only two numbers that we're focusing on right now in our needs because they are the greatest needs. And and one of those high needs is this upper end housing with which shows 153 units. The other need that we're focusing on is on the bottom table, which is the rental need. And this is actually more important from the state's perspective and for our needs analysis, because so the very low income and extremely low income, those units, that's 219 rental units that we need for that rent burden population. And so that's our greatest need that's been identified in this study. And then, as you can see, we have needs for for all categories. So it's not like we, you know, have any surplus of housing anywhere. We have, we, we have a shortage everywhere that we need to try to solve. And I'm going to switch pages. Hopefully it doesn't kick you off. But I'm going to go to page 35 of 117.
That's working.
Okay, I'm trying to be careful. So I don't know what I did before. So hopefully this is. Okay, so this is kind of a snapshot of what that housing need looks like as we compare it to our zones. And we have currently a land need of 146 acres total in various zones. And the low density zone would primarily be characteristic of that ownership housing of executive housing. The high density residential need, we have a need for 14 acres, and that would accommodate that that rent burdened number that I just showed you. And it happens that we have 14 acres of land in our inventory, and we have surplus land in our inventory and those other zoning categories. So this, this table pretty much just identifies that we have a need for certain amounts of land, and we also have that quantity or more in our inventory. So we were not able to justify any kind of urban growth boundary expansions. So as we have folks come to the city and say, you know, I'm on the fringe of the city, can you expand your boundary to bring me in so I can do a development? The short answer is no, because we have a huge surplus. And the state will not allow us to expand. And so.
Hold on a second, Mike. Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
This is Steve. So when they say, and I don't remember the nuances in the document, but you know, when they say we have 358 acres of buildable land inside the city limits, that that seems like a lot to me. And I'm assuming that they that netting a netting out the acres, they've adjusted for hillside developments, restriction on the hillside developments, riparian areas, you know, pieces of property that may be too small or not zoned right or whatever. I mean, you know, that just seems like a lot, a lot of acreage inside the city that is buildable to me.
There is a lot that's buildable. What this doesn't, it does account for all those things that you mentioned. It subtracts out all of the floodplain properties, riparian corridors, it accounts for the, you know, the acreage limits or the lot size limits that we have in the different zones. So all of those things are in there. And so this is essentially the amount of, I mean, acres, when it talks about, when we have a one acre zone, they don't identify that as a one acre property, if it's a 10 acre property, but they do account for that in the as they do the land need and the new housing and what that land can accommodate. Because acres is acres, but the net really is the subtraction of unbuildable areas of those properties.
Right. But suppose suppose somebody owns a piece of property that is technically one lot, or or right now is configured is one lot, but it could be two. And, and is that extra part of that lot considered in this 358 acres?
It is.
So, but I mean, I mean, so, so, you know, could be a potentially, it could be a potential for lots of flag lots, for instance, but that really depends on the property owner and whether or not they would allow that flag lot to happen, right?
Well, yeah. And that's, I think that same answer is the situation for every property that this inventory identifies is that property owner willing to sell that property and allow it to develop. It doesn't matter whether it's a flag lot for infill or whether it's a five acre parcel on the French at Calm that's vacant. It's still identified as a buildable lot that's in our inventory. And unfortunately, whether it's for sale or not, that is an available lot in the inventory.
Okay.
We need to target for development.
So, okay, I don't want to bog us down too much. I want you to keep going. So go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the challenges going through this is the land really available. It's buildable, but is it really available? But anyway, so the next page just kind of gives you a summary of key findings. These aren't really the key findings that I focused on so much in this report, but it gives you some more like data, if you like the data crunch. But the last bullet point in this key finding is, I think, the most important one for the conclusions is that we have sufficient land. But in that high density residential, we essentially have a 14 acre need, and we have 14 acres available to accommodate that need. We're literally kind of zeroed out and balanced on that particular zone. And so as our need for multifamily housing grows, this bullet point identifies that our focus So this is what I'm currently focusing on in the housing production strategy, which is the next phase of this project. But these are essentially, they call them strategies, but essentially these are goals. Each each one of these is a goal that's kind of plugged into our comprehensive plan for different housing categories and potential strategies or I want to call them incentives. We've been throwing that term around in in discussion as well of you know, how are we going to accommodate our housing needs in these different categories? And there's five categories listed. And you know, for, you know, different needs, obviously, the first one's multifamily, this, the next one's affordable housing. Then, as we get into this enhanced conditions of housing stock, this deals with our existing homes in our community that maybe need to be fixed up in order to make them either habitable or nicer for for folks to live in as they upgrade. Oops, and we've got increase our housing capacity. This deals with some of our upper end housing. And then the severe rent burden is was a target of this project, and so we had to include some elements for that. And then the last, that is the last one, and right now we're in the process of taking this strategy five because the severe rent burden component is is kind of addressed in in some of these other strategies. And so we're looking at changing this category to address, you know, a different housing need that we have, maybe that mid range housing that we haven't really talked about much. We have a need for it, but it's not in our peak need categories. But anyway, so we're you know, since we started this process, House Bill two thousand and three came along that actually we modeled this after when it was when it was in draft form. That has since been adopted or passed by the state. And we're now in a position where, you know, state cities throughout the state are required to go through this process and and adopt this. So this isn't an optional process for us. We're required to do this. And while it is a twenty year study, it's intended to be redone about every eight to ten years. And and I think in the House bill, I think it specifically identifies eight years, so we'll be going through this again in the not too distant future and and updating it and and reevaluating our strategies to see if they're working and and consider new strategies. So anyway, I guess with that, I'm all done. I'm I'm open to have questions. And I know, Steve, you had you had one that you mentioned right off the bat if you haven't already asked it.
Yeah, you know, if you look at page eight of one seventeen, it mentions the EOU enrollment. And it says the enrollment is in two thousand and fifteen is thirty-seven hundred and forty-one.
Yeah.
That might be total enrollment, including online students. I don't think I don't think EOU has ever had thirty-seven hundred students on campus. And so I'm not sure, I mean, that may be as high as two thousand students greater than than the actual number of students and Nicole can probably give me a better better figure, so I don't know how much that contributes. I mean, two thousand students at four, four students per household is what? Five with five hundred, five hundred households or five hundred apartments, that's.
Yeah, yeah, I think this is just a statistic they threw in there because the consultants that we have right now looking at our housing production strategy. They got some updated numbers from the university that it's, I think the thirty-seven hundred is actually a little bit lowered number based on what they were provided from, you know, that whoever in the housing department or.
Right, and and I guess I guess my point is that that is, that's total enrollment at EOU, not the number of students that have ever been on campus and living in town. And so my concern is if if you've, if if they're using that number to look at the need for low density housing or or high density housing, it could really skew things, I think tremendously, so.
Yeah, and just to get, just to speak on that point, because we had that conversation today with the consultants doing our housing production strategy.
Okay.
And some of the things that they brought up as questions on this number also because they don't see much relevance in this number.
Okay.
Because the what it doesn't account for is when you're looking at population. Unless that student physically, you know, claims LeGrand as their place of residence, they're not counted in our population. And so that's an issue. They also recognize that, I don't think it's in this report, but it was in the numbers that that they received as there's what, seven hundred or something beds in the dorms? I can't remember what it is. And so so they they've got it broke down to how many students are actually living on campus versus off campus. And then I identified that the university has a fairly robust remote learning program as well as you have, you know, citizens in our community that are doing you know, extra degrees or haven't got a degree and they're doing that. They might live in the county versus in the city. And so I think just recognizing that there is a housing need there is is really I think what the point is, but whether the number is right or wrong, it doesn't really influence the outcome.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. That, I mean, I I again, I I'd gone through, I think, probably down to most of the tables you talked about, but I hadn't really didn't get down to the key findings pieces. It's a dense document. There's a lot of cool stuff in here. It's worthy of of at least skimming through and seeing what's going on. And now that you've highlighted some of them, I'll go back and look at them a little more closely. I think my biggest concern is is that if you're clocking acres that may or may not be readily accessible, either by sale or physical access. And there's and they're including that in our net acreage for development. That that piece bothers me, and I think there needs to be a fudge factor in there to to allow for the possibility of inaccessibility because property owner chooses or will never choose to sell their property in the next twenty years or concept or not allow easement to a sort of locked in property.
Yeah, and to kind of speak that a little bit, Steve, I think there is a I don't know if fudge factor is the right word, but there's a little bit of cushion because part of that analysis was based on using county county assessor data. And they evaluate what is the size of a piece of property, what is the value of of improvements? And there's some kind of a recognized formula where if it's over a certain value, that property is considered built out, whether it is or isn't. It's it's treated as built out. So we potentially may have properties identified that are built out that, you know, may also get partitioned in the future. Because they have a fairly large backyard. And then we also have properties that you know, might not be divided. But I think I think that cushion is somehow built in through that particular analysis because they did not go parcel by parcel and physically look at
Yeah.
flag lots to see if something is could be divided.
Okay, okay. I I'm, you know, I I again, I, you know, I think of, you know, three hundred and fifty-eight acres is, wow, that's that's a mile by a mile and a half of property if you lumped it all together. And I'm looking, thinking around, where where is that, you know, I like.
Yeah, well, we we have a lot of land and there's a map. There's a map that shows it highlights where those lands are. In one of the illustrations, it's a full page map and a lot of that is kind of east of the Pepsi facility, all that farmland between the railroad and eighty-four. Yeah, let me see if I can.
That was a good visual.
That's the flood plain. So these are areas that were reduced or just removed from the area, steep slopes. Those were subtracted from the acreage.
Okay.
Riparian corridors were subtracted. Okay, so this one kind of gets you into, all of this orange is vacant. So this piece up here, this is a forty acre tract up on the hill that is technically vacant and buildable. It's hard to get to, but it's vacant. A lot of this is the upper phases of the ridge subdivision and some of the properties around there. And then there's a lot of stuff out off of behind Pepsi and then heading out towards the end of L Avenue and getting closer to Cove. So that, those are essentially our predominant areas. And then there's like little teeny pockets of buildable stuff through the city that kind of identified.
Right, right. Okay, that makes sense. I I just, I guess that's because it's not developed, it's a part of the city that I don't hardly ever go to. So it, you know, makes sense that that it's, it's doesn't, doesn't set in my head very well. But it looks like some of that is outside the city city limits, but within urban growth boundary.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And that's part of our, I mean, that's our jurisdictional land that manage, so. So, yeah, so that's included in the study.
So there's there's huge potential then for extending the city limits? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we can extend the city limits, which I think on this map is this yellow line.
Right.
And so you can extend it out to the red line. And with, you know, as those develop and we provide services out there.
Would would LCDC allow us to do that? Sort of as as a condition of or as part of the the strategy to to improve housing available?
Oh, yeah, yeah, right now, I mean, we have permission, we could do, we could do that anytime. And so right now we have an ordinance for annexation that when somebody goes to build, they have to connect the city services. And so that's why you see those annexation things come before you.
Okay, okay.
Where somebody's annexing in exchange for services. And that's how we do that. So when somebody comes in to do a subdivision, then we will annex that property at that time.
Okay, that's not something we could do as a council without with without being initiated by developers, so we couldn't.
Well, you could, but it's it's difficult. So that's where we kind of get into like the north side annexation thing, if you remember from
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Years ago, there's there's a number of different ways annexations can occur, but we generally react to requests and then we consider annexation upon that request.
Okay.
Because that's that's the easiest. We can do it through an administrative process without having to go to the electors and all those kind of things and.
Yep, okay. All right, any other questions for Mike or you have anything else for us, Mike?
Well, the only other thing I wanted to point out, because I I think it's important, during the planning commission public hearing, we received two letters of comment and they're in the back of your packet. The first letter is from the Fair Housing Council, I think is correct. Anyway, they they are kind of monitoring all the notices that go through the state for these kind of projects and they support the adoption of our housing needs analysis. The other letter came from Housing Matters of Union County. And some of their, I think a couple of their members were also on our committee. And they identified a discrepancy between the initial draft documents and the final document. The initial draft had a higher need for certain types of units than the final draft. And I I addressed that in the staff report where their comments are included, but that was based on a state requirement. It's it's kind of over my head, but it has to do with pent up demand for housing or housing that I guess is kind of waiting to be built or, and anyway, the state pretty much said you can't use pent up demand to jack up your need for additional housing. And so that had to get subtracted out, which is why there's a difference in those numbers. But but anyway, their letter suggested that we adjust our report and increase those numbers anyway, based on data that they think is more accurate.
Okay.
The general response is is it's kind of too late to do that unless we want to start over and pay a bunch of money to have the consultants go back and do some new number crunching.
That was me.
Okay, go ahead, Mary.
I I was just going to ask Mike whether or not this is adjusting for the newest floodplain plan.
It is not adjusting for the new floodplain, because that's not, that's probably a couple of years out before that's even done. And so at this point, we don't know what that looks like. Plus, it will be smaller, so if it does adjust, we're going to end up with probably a higher acreage need than what we are land availability, the need won't change. We'll end up with more vacant land that's available for development than the three hundred and some acres that Steve pointed out.
Okay, so we'll have more land available at that point.
We would.
Okay, thank you.
And and Mike, I did notice that in the PDF file that we have for for this action item, there's a lot of red strike out and that I'm assuming is the old plan and you're just including it there as a as a rep point of reference.
Yeah, it's just there for your legislative format. That is the entire goal ten chapter of the comp plan.
Okay.
Essentially, it's from around ninety-nine, two thousand. We adopted it around two thousand, so it was probably a year or two outdated at that point when we got to the adoption stage, but that's getting deleted and this is replacing it one hundred percent.
Okay, all right. Anything else for us, Mike, before?
That is all. And if if you have any interest to talk about the housing production strategy, we can do that during comments at the end of the meeting if there's an interest.
Okay, good. It, just a very quick aside before we go any further. Has anybody heard from Justin yet? Okay, thank you, man. Didn't see it pop in. Questions for Mike before I ask Robert for public comments on this. Lot of good work, Mike. I appreciate I appreciate this and it's, it 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 is, it's a, it's a lengthy document, but it is worth going through to get a better understanding of our our housing situation, so I encourage everybody to do that. Robert, any public testimony on this item that we need to get into record?
No, Mayor, other than the the two documents that were included as part of the packet that had been previously received as Mike talked about in the staff report.
Excellent, okay. Counsel discussion or comments? All right, so public hearing will be continued to our December second meeting. At which time the proposed ordinance is scheduled to be read a second time by title only and considered for adoption. So this is an ordinance. This is our first reading tonight. And next month, we will go over this again and have a second reading and very likely a vote. So unless I have here other questions or comments from the council, I will ask for Stacy to read the proposed ordinance for the first time by title only.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of LeGrand, Union County, Oregon, amending the statewide goal chapters ten of the City of LeGrand Comprehensive Plan, recodifying the comprehensive plan, repealing ordinance number thirty-two zero eight, series twenty thirteen, and all other ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and declaring an effective date.
Okay. So ends that item and we will return to it next month for a second reading and and adoption. No items of unfinished unfinished business. We have one item of new business and that is to consider a resolution renewing the Grand Ron Enterprise Zone, and I believe this one is Mr. Strope.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. So I believe the council is aware that we do have an enterprise zone that covers some significant property within LeGrand and Union County. Few years ago, we expanded that enterprise zone to include the industrial potential industrial lands that we brought into the urban growth boundary. And when that happened, all of the participants had to pass resolutions to make that expansion, which they did. Enterprise zones do have a shelf life and when they come to that date, they can be renewed, which is the action before you in your packet, you have the resolution that we're asking the city council to consider. The other partner organizations will also pass this resolution so that we can continue to have an enterprise zone. It's a good business recruitment and expansion tool. It is used fairly infrequently because the requirements to qualify for it can be pretty difficult to meet. One of the things that we worked on with Shelley Burdeness at the county was the local incentives that are part of this. One of the things that we wanted to make sure was that we didn't create a situation where the city of LeGrand was essentially subsidizing development outside of the city or the urban growth boundaries specific to waiver of building permit fees. And a good example of that would be a major project with the plan review and fire life safety, we might have to a contract out to a third party to do where we would be on the hook for that consulting cost. So we crafted the local incentives to exclude those things that could end up costing the city to have to subsidize a development. And those are included in your packet as Exhibit C, but essentially the things that a jurisdiction has within their their total control, that's usually done with in-house staff. um a jurisdiction has within their, their total control that's usually done with in-house staff. Uh, the intent is to waive those sorts of things. Uh, yeah, it was just an added incentive to try to encourage development. Uh, because even if it's not within the city limits of La Grande or within uh urban growth boundary, uh, the types of projects that do qualify for the tax abatement through an enterprise zone do help the region as a whole. And so uh we think it's a great program. It's a, it's a good tool to have and I'll be happy to answer whatever questions you may have.
When you say um, um, all the jurisdictions need to act on this before uh the end of the year, that means all communities in Union County that have an enterprise zone will act on this in, in some way, shape or form, and then it'll then go to the county for approval, is, is that?
So, thank you for the question, Mayor. So that the sponsoring agencies include Union County, City of Elgin, uh, City of La Grande, uh North Powder and City of Union. So all of those entities are part of the enterprise zone and it's, it's a single enterprise zone that those agencies have jointly applied for. And the county uh administers the enterprise zone for the entities.
Okay, good. And just briefly, in case anybody is watching, can, can you in the briefest of terms identify what, what the enterprise zone means for someone who chooses to develop um or, or, or access that particular um economic development tool?
If you're doing, if you're doing a major project, you can get uh property tax abatement.
Okay.
Uh, but there are certain, let me jump to it. Um, trying to find the specific piece. I don't think it specifically identifies within the resolution uh what the requirements are. Uh, but there's a certain capital investment that has to be maintained. There's some job creation that's tied to it. There's a period of time that you have to maintain those. Uh, the other thing that we did include in this that was not there before was a provision on those local incentives that if they don't continue to maintain the requirements for the tax abatement that they get from the enterprise zone, that the jurisdiction could uh potentially go back and recoup those fees that were waived.
Okay, okay. And, and as I'm looking at the map and I, Exhibit A and it, on my screen, it's tilted sideways, so I keep tilting my head, so I can.
I'm wondering about that.
Use, uh, view it a little better. Um, it does not appear as if the enterprise zone and, at impinges on the urban renewal district at all. Is that correct?
It specifically does not.
Okay.
It, it kind of doesn't make sense to have an, an urban renewal district that uses tax increment financing and then have a separate enterprise zone program uh that provides tax abasement.
Yeah, yeah, that seems a little.
You, yeah, you can do that, um, but we have chosen not to.
Okay, all right. Um, any questions for Robert before I ask for uh any possible? Well, let me ask Robert, any public testimony on this?
Uh, no.
Okay, council discussion or comments?
So Steve on Exhibit C, it describes a little bit of um some of the local incentives.
Okay.
Um, the permitting, um, uh, no charge for driveway and curb cut permits, excavation permits, that sort of thing.
All right.
Um, so, and there's, there's more on there, but it's all on Exhibit C.
Okay, yep. And I, I hadn't got past the th- thence, which defines the, the, the uh, the, the boundaries of this thing. And it is like, what, six or seven pages of that? So thank you for pointing that out. Um, any other questions or comments? If not, I will entertain a motion on this action item. Okay, I move that the proposed resolution renewing the Grand Ron Enterprise Zone be read by title only, put to a vote and passed.
I second. I couldn't scroll quick enough.
I, 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 that's a rare occurrence for me to, to make a motion, but I, I don't think it's out of, out of, out of rule. Uh, any other comments or discussion on it? If not, I'll ask Stacy for a roll call vote, please.
Do you want me?
I need to uh read the uh, the resolution by title only, then we can do it.
Okay, a resolution of the City Council of the City of La Grande, Union County, Oregon, supporting the redesignation of the Grand Ron Enterprise Zone, repealing resolution forty-six ninety-six, series twenty fifteen, and all other resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict here with.
All right, so we've got a, a motion. We've had a reading of the proposed resolution by title only. Now I will ask for a roll call vote.
Steve Clemens?
Yes.
Gary Lillard?
Yes.
Karine Dudo?
Yes.
Nicole Howard?
Yes.
Mary Ann Meesner?
Yes.
Justin Rock?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, good. Thank you. Um, what's interesting is I've been involved with the city for a long time and I, I, I seldom see anyone take advantage of this, Robert, and I don't know why that is. Maybe because some of the requirements are a little stiff um and it, and we don't have the, that level of development um going on that, that would qualify for them, but just curious, I don't know. I can't recall anything ever happening along these lines.
Yeah, we, we do get them from time to time, Mayor, but the, the fact that the county administers it, we really don't have the visibility of those.
All right.
Uh, and I think the last ones that occurred were out in the Baum Industrial Park.
Okay.
Uh, I think Beretto may have uh done one at one point in time.
Okay, all right. Um, moving right along, um, staff comments. I see a number of you here. Um, anybody want to jump in uh and give us some updates? That'd be appreciated. Come on, Stu. Uh, Chief, go ahead.
Hey, I just wanted to share with Mr. Mayor, city councilors, uh, we've had a uh, a slight uniform change for our police officers here at the police department. Uh, this has been discussed for some time, but I'm rather a traditionalist and professionalism and image of our officers is important to me and I think it is to our community as well, but what the officers have been asking for, for some time is external uh ballistic vest carriers. Uh, so for many years since uh the officers have been wearing uh bulletproof vests, they've been underneath their uniform shirt. But what has happened over time is our officers experience uh regularly lower back pain and some of our younger officers, unlike me, uh, with the addition of less lethal uh tools such as tasers and the such, they run out of room on their belt, so, and add weight. So many agencies uh around the country have gone to these external carriers, but I, I'll be frank with you, early on, I wasn't very impressed because they looked rather militaristic and I'm not real favorable about that for our uniformed officers. Uh, that has changed, um, and they have rather uh professional looking uh uniform items that they can now wear on the outside and we have done that. And so the officers are already you know, reporting that they're more comfortable and uh at the end of their twelve-hour shifts, they're, they're not experiencing some of the, the back pain that they have uh previously. So from an officer wellness perspective, I think it was a good, solid decision. And I think, I wish that we were in person because my intent was to have an officer come with me or I would wear the uniform myself so that you could see it, but over time, I think you will see it and I, I, the, the officers have received some positive feedback from community members uh during contacts and I think that that as you see the officers, you will see that they, some people may not even notice a difference. It's, it's actually very subtle. Uh, but uh they look very professional and uh, and I'm kind of anxious for you guys to all get a chance to see them. We did this all within budget. Uh, we did it uh over the course of last fiscal year and the beginning of this fiscal year. Um, so we, we didn't have to buy new ballistic panels. It, it's just the carrier. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know that we've had that change and uh look forward to all of you having a chance to see them.
So Chief, could I ask, uh, make a request, maybe take a photograph of one of the officers uh and, and shoot it to us through our, our city email? That, that would be one way for us to see it.
Absolutely.
At least, safer way than getting pulled over.
You bet. I have an entire office full of people that are really excited to get their picture taken and, and shared, but I, I'll find somebody that will, will enjoy that.
Okay.
I'd even catch them when they're not looking.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else for us? Chief? Oh, oh, I saw Stu light up there, so we're, um, go ahead, Stu.
We see your lips moving, but we don't hear you. Sorry, Stu. Stu was gonna say everything is wonderful and he's happy.
Well, I was gonna ask Stu how the, the Halloween uh drive-through at Riverside went.
The mayor can unmute and he can talk to that.
Oh, okay.
Steve, you're muted again.
Steve, are you gonna answer me?
Yes, sorry, I had it on mute. My, my, my wife's washing the dishes in the background, so um, I was gonna let, say that Stu and I were both at the Halloween thing and I was gonna let him take the thunder. Um, and um, and then I said, man, I was gonna turn it over to Kip so he can, he can do his thing.
But Stu can't do. Stu, sound isn't working. Steve, you have to.
All right, Kip, you, I'm gonna let you have it and then uh.
Okay, um, well, on the heels of uh the election, uh, the library served as a ballot box drop-off site uh for the ca- for the city, um, replacing City Hall this time around. Um, and it was quite well-used. Um, I know Robin was really excited about it being open twenty-four, seven and ADA accessible, so I believe she's gonna talk to Robert about making the library a permanent site instead of City Hall. Very good.
Yeah, we already had, we already had that conversation. I thought that I had copied you on the response back to her. I apologize.
Might be in my box, who knows?
I probably forgot.
Okay, you forgot. Um, the library, we're into our third week of the building being reopened. Um, we're seeing maybe a hundred to a hundred and fifty people a day at most. Um, not terribly busy. Uh, the building capacity is twenty uh at any one time and we've only hit that once and came close a second time, but for the most part, you can come in and have the whole building pretty much to yourself if you want. Um, and we just received last week um a ten thousand dollar uh and some change grant uh from the state library. Um, we'll be using that money to, one, work with um EOU to uh bring tutors in for the literacy center and to add computer equipment in the literacy center for uh people working toward their GED. Um, because a lot of folks don't have computer at home, talking to the folks at the GED center. They have, you know, people who are looking for a computer at Aunt Sally's house and hopefully it's available when they are able to study. So we'll create a space here for them to be able to do that and work with their tutor up at the college. And we're also going to work with WorkSource here to install a job resource computer station uh where people would be able to work. There wouldn't be time limits on the computer like the other ones are. Um, so people would be able to do more job research, uh, look for jobs, complete their resumes. Um, we'd add a document scanner because a lot of documents have to be signed and then uploaded, so that would be able on a nice little WorkSource center for them to, to work on their jobs here. So that's what we're planning to do with that money.
Good. Um, Kip, very quickly, um, is there a time limit on how long someone can be in the library now or is it is it just a, a number of people?
We're kind of playing with it. Right now, it is a combination of both twenty people and if you're browsing thirty-minute time limit, if you're using the computer, you have an hour.
Okay.
Um, but I think it's flexible and we'll probably be experimenting with that.
Okay, good. Well, thanks for, for getting us open and, and also for um, one last try on the audio. Okay, when Kip is done, we'll let you come back in.
I am done. It's all Stu now.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you, Kip. Appreciate it. Try, Stu.
All right, ready now. Magic.
Magic.
Just had, it's called change the setting, so I don't know, it was a good try. Um, so yeah, Steve and I and others, of course, were at Riverside Park Saturday and uh it was madness. Um, there were, I think, at least four hundred cars uh through the park and the mission was to basically the cars would drive in off of um Fruitdale and they would loop through the park and stopping at a variety of stations, including activity stations and candy stations and whatever. And we were doing the photo booth, Steve and I, and so we held up this sort of plywood um cut out of a pumpkin to their car window and took their picture and then posted them on Facebook. So super great, amazing event and uh hopefully we don't have to do it again because we'll be back to normal, but it was, it was really cool uh to get all the support of the businesses and local folks and I think traffic was probably backed up on spruce all the way past uh that market and uh.
Was, it was way down there. I will, I will tell you this much, um, I had more than one person asked if we were gonna do this again. And, and they, it, it, and, and that was from people who had waited in, in their cars in line for upwards of an hour or more as cars moved through the circuit and kids thought it was cool. They were sticking their heads out the window. I don't know what this is. Um, they were sticking their cars out, heads out the window. They were getting into the pictures. It was a total blast. Um, and it, uh, we thought we'd be over by what, six-thirty and oh yeah, it'll be a few cars. It got so dark, we couldn't take pictures anymore because we couldn't see the people in the car. Um, so after that, we just handed out goodies and it was, I, I, I'd like to do it again. It was, it was a lot of fun, so. Thank you, Stu. And Michaela deserves a lot of credit, I think, for sort of organizing this thing and getting it, all the, all the people to show up. And um, there were yeah, what, ten, fifteen stations that people rode through? Yeah. And it was, and once we got things ironed out, man, they just, those cars just came through on a regular basis and nobody double dipped. Anything else, Stu? Okay, um, so we've heard from Kip and Stu and, and uh, oh, there's Christine. Hey, how are you?
Hey, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, so I just want to give you an update on some of the things that we're working on and then also um briefly, Robert and I are meeting tomorrow to put together a framework for our conversation for the work session. So as we do that, I will be asking for some input from you all so that we can have some things prepared. I, I do want to take this as an opportunity to do some brainstorming, but I feel like time is of the essence in trying to um prepare our businesses for the winter. And so I want to be able to have some action items that come out of that work session that we can, can move forward with. And so um, again, trying to put together a framework that would uh allow you to bring some ideas to the table that then we can can move forward with
Right.
uh during that work session on the sixteenth.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does make sense.
Okay, um, the other things we have going on, we did receive a grant. We applied for a uh Eastern Oregon grant. As a region, we applied with five other communities um from the area and received a grant from Business Oregon to offer some direct uh business consulting. So we're in the process of lining up those consultants. Want to have that announced by next week because the funding does have to be used up by the end of December. So some of the things that we'll be looking uh, having consultants for would be things like um bookkeeping, getting services in place to help businesses put their um financial systems together. Um, business planning, web design, social media. And I think that's what I have right. Oh, and marketing. Um.
So who, who's gonna be the consultants?
That's what we're working on.
Okay, sorry.
So we've made a lot of phone calls. I have a few people confirmed. We're just trying to get that whole slate figured out before we actually move forward with it. Then the other thing that I'm working on with our rare participant, Lori, that you met last time. Lori and Taylor Scroggins from Main Street have gone through an advanced training with the Buxton Company. They now have some data available that we did not have access to previously. And so we're running demographic reports and marketing research strategies for our retail businesses and restaurants. And Lori has already put together two presentations that she'll be working with businesses on. So it's everything from helping businesses identify, she can do a heat map to look at where their customers are coming from. And the one business we did this with that was absolutely fascinating where they were pulling customers from. So it's really specific data that is directly linked to the location of those businesses. We can look at the peak hours for those businesses. For example, the one business that we ran it on, it shows that their peak customer time is at noon on Thursdays. And consistently, that's their highest customer interaction. And incidentally, I had visited that business at noon on Thursday. So I was like, that is so amazing. It's really accurate. So we're looking forward to getting that out and our Buxton contract does run out in January. So we want to do as much of that as possible. In the meantime, Buxton is working on our deliverables from our fourth year of the contract, the things that we discussed at the work session last year. And we do still have one business that is moving forward in the building permit process from that, from the leads list. So I'm excited.
Is that a business that we would know about or have we heard about this or is it quiet still?
It has not officially been announced yet.
Okay, then I won't ask anymore.
I know the rumor mill is out there, but I will not be the person that officially announces that until the company says it's time. So.
Unfortunately.
Um. And I think that was it. Those are the big things right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
You did mention the work session. You and Robert are working on that. Did you have a meeting about that or?
We're meeting tomorrow.
Okay, and I would encourage council, just to remind you that that work session is to talk about a possible program structure for assisting businesses this winter that are affected by COVID. And there may be some other things that come out of that. I'm hoping, we'll see what happens.
Yeah. And actually, sorry, I'm gonna double.
Go ahead.
Two other things we're doing. Through Main Street and the Economic Vitality Commission Committee, we're working on a project where we're assigning committee members to have designated areas of downtown that they'll become a block captain for. And so they will work with the businesses in that assigned area and start forming a relationship with those businesses to act as a liaison between the business and Main Street and also as a method for us to collect information from them and then push information back out. And that is also going to help us as we move forward with our business retention and expansion survey that we're working on in collaboration with the Rural Development Initiative. And you may have seen in the newspaper that they did receive a grant from the Ford Family Foundation to help us with that project. So if you notice that in the newspaper, that is the project that that grant was referencing. And we're having our first meeting with that ad hoc board in two weeks. So that will be coming out. Hopefully, we'll start that process of surveying in January.
Okay, good. Thanks, Christine.
Yep. Nope, I'm done.
So we've got Christine, Stu, Kip, Chief Bell. Kyle, you're up, but you're muted. Oh, there you go.
Oh, I know. I'm on it.
Okay.
I'm on my way today. A couple of things. First one is get your cell phones ready. There is predicted snow on Saturday. So being the hot topic it is this year, it's not expected to be much of an accumulation, but you might see white stuff.
Okay.
Just wanted to pre-warn you on that. Leaf removal is projected to start on the 16th, so this year, we're gonna do it a little different. We're gonna be putting a map up on Facebook. We're gonna work with Elcor Media Group. Kind of try and say, these are the areas where we're gonna be. Don't park here. We're gonna pick up your leaves and then we're not coming back. So.
So Kyle, when you say leaf pickup, I mean, if I get my leaf blower and blow all my leaves out to the sidewalk, you pick them up for me?
That's not really the intent of it.
But just be, I'm just, I sort of know that, but not everybody would know, you know, so.
Yeah, the intent has always been that we're trying to get the leaves out of the streets so they don't end up in the storms who are. In the past, we've had a lot of problems with that, that people will see us go by and then they'll just rush and shove everything into the road and then it's a problem. So it's, we're gonna let people know where we're at. We're gonna pick up the stuff in the street and that's the intent of the program.
Okay.
Is that, do you already have barriers up?
No, we don't. We have just finished the map today. I'm gonna run it through. We work in conjunction with City Garbage Service, so they're gonna review the map, make sure they're okay with what our timelines look like and then it'll start being advertised probably by this weekend.
Okay, there's a barrier on my street, so it wasn't, and it's right by a storm drain, so I wasn't sure what it was for.
Could be anything. I'm not sure. I know the crews are switching. We're done paving for the year. We've switched over to start finishing up some sewer fixes that we've had to get taken care of in anticipation for the lining project, which will take place in January slash February. There's a few fixes that we wanted to take place before we get any more flooding events, so we're on those. And outside of that, the fleet's ready for snow, so we're good to go and ready. So that's all I got.
Okay, good. Thanks, Kyle.
Yep.
So Kyle, Christine, Stu, Kip, Chief, Mike's talked. Kim, do you have anything or you don't need to even, if you want to just show your face and smile, that'd be fine. Okay, okay, hi. I do know, I did, I don't know if anybody else saw this, but the auditors were here last month. I would see them occasionally in the council annex, so I'm guessing they're, they've proceeded with their review and they'll be preparing a document. It's nice that they're kind of timely with these things now. It seems like we got a little behind on things for a while and the audits didn't happen until June or so, but. Well, I don't want to, anyway. We didn't get the full reports, it seemed like, until later in the year, but they, these guys come around pretty quickly with it. If there's no other staff report, city manager comments.
Christine and the mayor both already mentioned the November 16th work session and talked about a potential program for business assistance with the dollars that the council included in the adopted budget. The monthly report, I think, went out last week and if you saw that, it's got about 100 lines of items that we're either working on or keeping people up to date on, so. It's nice to get that thing back out in a recurring and regular basis and hopefully you're finding value in that. And I think that was pretty much what I wanted to cover, so thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Before I ask for input or comments from the council, I've got a number of things here. The first one is a proclamation. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but it's proclaim that November 1st is extra mile day and encouraging people to go the extra mile. It's, it seems sort of passe to do this because it's a little late, but it also seems a little a little redundant because people do so much in our community already by volunteerism and service and in being involved from kids' sports through the schools and church services and etcetera. So November 1st is the extra mile day. I'm gonna cross out the second one because it was the work session. We already commented on that. Robert, just a very quick update. You were on the phone today about and talking about a variety of things, but I wonder if you could bring council up to speed on your recent comments about having, providing council laptops and what that means.
Sure. Yeah, so one of the things that we procured was laptops so that we could make sure that particularly in the COVID environment, that we don't have situations where the council does not have access to Zoom meetings. And so what's going on right now is the ESD, our tech support folks are setting those up. It will become an item that we will issue to the council. That way you can do all of your city email on it. It's on there. Ideally, we'll be able to go to a more paperless council packet format. And we went ahead and got very good, solid machines. They have the full keypad on them for the numbers, which is always a challenge for me. If I don't have a full keypad for the numbers, it's a bit of a pain. My intent is to get those issued to the council probably in advance of the December meeting. And then as we have new counselors come on, we'll provide those to them and be able to use those as the primary communications tool for a variety of things. But it makes it much simpler because then your council email is actually maintained on a city-owned device as opposed to your personal device. So.
Yep.
We do have them, we do have them in place and we're getting them set up now.
Okay, thank you. This one is probably gonna involve a little bit of council discussion and probably input from at least a couple of staff. I was contacted last week, I think it was, by some business owners downtown relative to people hanging out in Mac Square Park and using their services, their facilities to, for sundry reasons, mostly just to use a restroom. And I wanted to, I think Robert might have shared some of the communications that we've had and I had a response from Stu and I see he lighted up and I see Chief Bell is now visible. I don't know what the solution is and maybe it's colder weather and less, you know, less desirable to be outside. But this has been an ongoing issue and I wonder if Robert, maybe you can lead off on this conversation and then Chief Bell and Stu can add in their pieces that they've talked about. Trying to get to some idea of what to do with those people and what we can and cannot do, I suppose the answer is that. So, Robert?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, member of the council. First and foremost, people have a right to use our facilities, be in the park. And it is true that we have had some challenges on an individual basis with people doing things in Mac Square and other areas that really are wholly inappropriate and we kind of deal with those as we can. I kind of teed Stu and Chief Bell up to kind of share a little bit of some of the specific things that we've been doing to try to address some of the challenges that we've faced. But what I, what then I will say is it is to make, to take care of some of the issues that we're dealing with, it does put a strain on resources and there's only so much we can do from a labor standpoint, taking care of things and addressing addressing challenges that we have with our staffing and time available. But I'll let the two gentlemen that deal with it most frequently kind of chime in, so.
So before we, before Stu or Chief Bell talk comments, is from what I've gathered, this is not a situation you're unfamiliar with and it's not a situation that you haven't tried to alleviate in some way already. Is that a fair statement?
It is. We've been, we've been dealing with this for quite a while. Not, we're not talking weeks, we're talking months and longer. You know, one of the things, I think it was not this past summer, but, you know, 15 months ago summer, Stu and I met with a business owner across the street who had indicated concerns about people defecating in the landscaping at Mac Square. Also, another business owner had expressed concerns about people doing illicit things in the shrubbery and Parks Department immediately went out and limbed up some of the trees to kind of eliminate some of the privacy hiding areas that we think were contributing to some of those activities. So this, we've dealt with things for literally months regarding that piece of ground.
Okay, so Stu, can you talk a little bit, because it is a park situation? Can you talk to some of the things that you've done over there?
Yeah, I think it's a good opportunity to just kind of recap kind of the challenges and some of the things we've tried. So Robert mentioned some of the challenges. Another one is perceived danger. You know, people have complained to Chief and I and others about it doesn't feel safe to walk through the park with my child or with my wife or with my family. That may be just because people look different or they have a perceived danger. Also, the garbage is, according to my park staff, full of, you know, whiskey and beer bottles every day and it's just broken glass, drug and alcohol use, you know, loitering. There's been times where we've had people strewn their entire laundry basket across the park or other items, treating it like their living room. It's been a big challenge for my crew. Other citizens are delivering food to them and providing them with things that they need. That's a challenge for us. And that's just something that they talk about and also my staff have observed. It's also a part of their social network. It's a place to be. I've talked to one lady. She said, I'm new to town. I just lost my job. I'm from Walla Walla. My car broke down and I asked where to go and talked to a fellow homeless person and they said, you know, come to the square. You know, so that was, it's the place to be. So it's another challenge. It's the place to be. Another challenge, of course, is that we don't have any loitering ordinances and people have the right to be in the park as long as they're obeying the law. And I'll leave Gary to do the law stuff, but if they're not committing a crime, of course, like Robert said, they have a right to be in the park. Some of the resolutions and things that we've tried, like Robert said, trimming the trees and bushes and landscape areas, we worked with, you know, Gary and Kip and I worked on a notice, order to vacate and remove personal property notice, which essentially is if they are sleeping in the park or they have left a bunch of garbage or what we perceive to be garbage or personal belongings, we can post a sign legally that says you have 24 hours to remove your garbage or your stuff. And if they don't, then we'll remove it for them and they can be cited for a variety of things. We've turned off the electricity to the park stage and we've locked the electrical boxes so they don't have an opportunity to charge their phone. Now that seems to let them linger. We've removed the picnic table that we originally had there for the farmer's market. This year was easy because there's no market. People weren't encouraged to stay there. Next year, the market would like to have tables down there. It's just, they, you know, the table is full. The library is restricted, the Wi-Fi times, eliminating evening hours. And park staff and police have worked together to notify people that are in the park. I've been there at 7:00 in the morning with a uniformed officer, letting folks know they can't sleep there. The police department has trespassed people and issued other citations that all that Gary talked about. But we've really worked hard to kind of do what we can to discourage them to, at least, obviously, the criminal behavior. The latest incident was a minor was there drinking and intoxicated and my staff observed that and we called dispatch and, you know, police came out to handle that situation. So it's a big, there's lots of challenges and it's not unique to our community. This is a, you know, nationwide, worldwide thing in parks and public spaces and it's tough. Nobody solved the issue yet. This is a, you know, nationwide, worldwide thing in parks and public spaces and it's tough. Nobody solved the issue yet. So I think that we're looking for solutions. We have some strategies that have worked a little bit. And between the library and the police department and the parks department, I feel like we've we've solved some things. There aren't people sleeping at the park anymore, which is good. Due to that citation with the uniformed officer, the word got out and the word does get out. The rest of it during the day is a challenge. So I'll let Gary kind of take it unless anybody has questions.
Before before Chief Bell comments, I think my I understand that it's a park and people have a right to use the park and I would never deny people that opportunity. What my concern is and what the business owners are concerned about is the overflow from of those people using their business, not just to buy, you know, buying minor items and they've become a customer. And then they and then they're loitering or hanging out in their business and and that's when it gets a little weird and a little difficult because a business owner has the right, I suppose, to exclude those people if they choose. But, you know, if they're trying to be good community servants or good community neighbors, it's that that's it doesn't feel right for them to do that. So maybe Chief Bell, you can comment on some of the things that you all have encountered and tried and maybe what what businesses could do if they're encountering the situation. So.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Stu captured a lot of the things that we've been working together on for several months now. I think it's important at the front end to share with you guys that the approach that I and my staff have been taking is that, you know, this is a complex issue and it's not going to be solved with a simple solution. And I think it's key to also remember that, you know, we're not talking about people, human beings that, you know, can all be lumped into one basket. And so one of the things that we've been doing at the police department is within, like City Manager commented, resource limitations, but we're trying to have our officers make personal contact with with people to find out what their story is. And, you know, we have a lot of resources in our community and a lot of people that are anxious and willing to help in whatever capacity that they can. And, you know, we're dealing with with some people that, you know, we have some mental health issues and we try to help facilitate connection there when we can. We have some people who are drug addicted and we, you know, you guys understand what I'm getting at is that not not every person you see in Mac Square, you know, it's not just one thing that we're dealing with. And it's it's fair to tell you guys that what I have found out is that not all of the persons that maybe some of the passersby are seeing or talking about when they they reach out to you, they're not all homeless people. We have, like Stu spoke about, we have some people that just want to hang out there. I know that a number of the people that our officers speak to regularly there, they have homes or apartments within our community. They just choose to go out down and hang out at the park. And this is a rather visible location because there's lots of retail and passersby on Adams and forth. But it and Stu could speak to this as well, but we have other parks and have had for years where we have people hang out there. It's just not quite as visible. So we're taking an approach to try to help mitigate whatever problems or perceived problems there are. But it's not one solution and the solution is not necessarily to take enforcement action against people. The other thing is, and Robert mentioned it, is that just hanging out, loitering by, you know, all other by the common definition, it's not illegal. The Supreme Court of the United States has found that to be an unlawful law a number of times when cities have tried to have ordinances specific to loitering. But we have city ordinances and we have park rules and we have state laws that all are legal. And if people are engaging in activity that is otherwise against the rules or disturbing someone else other than just the way someone looks, we can deal with that. Most recently, in addition to the things that Stu spoke about, we have tried to increase the number of foot patrols that our officers are engaging in downtown in that area, Mac Square, but also in the adjoining businesses. So Catty Corner across the street in the marketplace and then we're also aware when we try to impact some kind of a positive change, that that can displace people so that they move. Say, for instance, we've had people move into the foyer area of the Foley Building. If you know, there's an access off of Adams Avenue and then that creates frustration with the property manager and owner there. And so we're trying to work with all individuals, you know, as best we can. So, Mr. Mayor, to answer your question about business owners, what can they do? We encourage them, reach out to us, reach out to the officers and every instance is different. We can't just give one answer like do this. And so if they're experiencing something in particular, give us a call and officer will stop by, provide some options and it kind of depends on what's happening. And then we'll, as much as we can, we were trying to make contact with people just to make them feel a little more comfortable that, you know, officers are in and around the area. And also I have reached out to, some of you may be aware of this, but I spoke to the board chair for the warming station and they are intending on opening on the 15th of November. And so I believe that that's probably going to help mitigate this some. You know, there's going to be a place for some people to be rather than just hanging out at Mac Square. And I know that the warming station is also part of their services to help resource and provide assistance to people to get out of the situation if that's what they want. But the truth is, we have some folks that are, this is the choice they're making and they're just choosing to hang out there. But happy to answer any questions if you have.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Chief. I'm trying to frame this. Stu, it sounds like parks have have removed some amenities. The electrical outlets being shut off, no picnic tables. So it doesn't seem like adding amenities of any way, for instance, a porta potty would be really effective. I mean, it might draw more people down there if we did something like that. Is that a fair sort of statement to make?
Yeah, I think surprisingly, those are surprisingly expensive as well. They price them based on how many times a week they service them and judging from the people down there, I would imagine we'd service them a lot. Otherwise, there'd be a bigger problem. I just, I don't have that in the budget and I only have two, I only have two park staff this time of year. They do the entire, you know, everything else in the parks and it's it's just impossible with resources that we have.
Okay, all right. Well, I did, I did want to make this available information, bring it to the council. I'm not looking for solutions here. I think the Chief and Stu are doing as much as they possibly can with the resources they have. And the encouragement is if there are business owners are having issues, the best thing to do is to contact an officer as soon as possible and assess every situation differently and go forward. I think I heard Robert and I talked a little bit about this and it sounds like when those people have been asked to leave for renting customers or renting people who are renting the park or for the market, Farmer's Market, they have, when treated with respect and approached kindly, they move on and they leave the space to the people who have right to it for the time being. But as Stu says, it's probably a social place and maybe with the colder weather, it'll it'll be less attractive to hang out there. Thank you all for that. I have two more things. I really apologize for this. Robert and I spoke very briefly this afternoon about January council swear-in. He is working out some arrangements. I personally feel, and I think I will share this, that being sworn in in city council chambers in front of the flag in a face-to-face situation seems to be me more honorable and impressive than if we were to do a swear-in while we're sitting in our bedrooms or in a hotel on the coast. So Robert is working on that a little bit and hopefully he and I will come up with something that we can share with you in December. And the last, the very last thing that I have and it's kind of emotional for me because it's very impactful. I want to thank Corinne Dudo for her service to the council. And I am very sad to know that she won't be joining us in January. She's a friend and she's a colleague for most definitely, but she's also a friend and she's given so much to us on the council and to the community that she deserves to be recognized for that publicly. I also want to congratulate Mary Ann and Nicole for their reelection. We work together well, very well, I believe, and I'm looking forward to another couple of years. You have to put up with me for that long at least. And I extend my congratulations to David Glab and to John Bosart who will be joining us in January. We will have a different council, but that is the inevitability of life is change. And we will, we will move on with the things that we need to accomplish and I know we'll work together very well. I'm sorry I took up an hour and a half with my with my comments. My wife has criticized me of late for speaking too much. But Mary Ann, I'm going to go in the order that you presented on the screen to me. Mary Ann, do you have any comments at all for this evening?
No, but just thank you, Steve, for the congratulatory note and congratulations to you too for winning.
Thank you.
And to Nicole and Corinne, I'm really sorry. I'm going to miss you because you have been an integral part of our council.
Gary, comments?
Yes, very quickly, I just wanted to let people know that we had a virtual meeting of the senior council back on October 13th. And there were a couple of things that were kind of interesting. The PGG building out in Island City is they have closed on that. That is now actually owned by Community Connections. I think they're going to be for, well, involves their food bank operation. I don't think they're actually going to be distributing things onsite, but more of a warehouse arrangement, at least as I understand it. So that was kind of interesting. And then the other thing I thought I would mention again is that they indicated that they have rent assistance monies. They have gotten some additional grants, I think, because of the COVID situation. So they've had a little more rental assistance to offer than probably has been typical. And at the time, they even still have a little mortgage assistance available, realizing this has been about three weeks ago now that this information was shared.
That only be for seniors, Gary?
No, I was about to mention it's not limited to just seniors. That's for anybody in the community that can indicate a need. So I would encourage anybody like that to give Community Connections a call and see what they have available and what the conditions are that would need to be met, but it's potentially a very helpful thing.
Okay, good. Thank you for sharing that, Gary. I did notice an email recently about the youth council. Do you have anything to add to that? I know we've sort of put that on the back burner because of COVID, but you know, is there something?
Probably it's something we're going to address after the first of the year. So not, not too much to add at this point. I think there, well, I know there was some contact made with the high school counselor and Corinne could probably update us on that a little bit.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Corinne, anything to add?
Yeah, I've been in contact with Chelsea Rohan at the high school about a couple of things. One of them is the youth council and she was really excited about that idea. And then also about our difficult to fill positions in police fire EMS. And she was also interested in that and invited our staff to go to their job fair in whatever form that it takes in the spring. So hopefully that will get rolling and make a little bit more connection of the high school in the city and maybe funnel some potential in future employees into into the city. So I think those could both be good things. Also, I missed the last airport commission meeting because they have it in the middle of the day and I couldn't get away, but they are moving forward with with the airport reconstruction. They've closed one runway. They're redoing stuff. So it's all, it was a delay this summer because of COVID. But it sounds like they're, they're pretty close to being on track. So I think they're shutting down for the winter and in the spring they'll pick it back up again. So and it should be completed by I think the end of next summer. So.
Okay, good. Thank you. Anything, nothing else? Okay, Nicole?
Nothing from me. There'll be an update on the chambers website eventually, but other than that, nothing.
Okay, thank you. Justin, finally. And let me do this, let me do this publicly. Congratulations on Riker and I hope everyone is doing well. We've just lost your video, by the way.
Oh. I'm back, sorry. Thank you. No, I am actually holding the little guy. Hit all the wrong buttons at the same time.
Just don't push that button, too bad.
Justin, can you pick him up a little bit more so we can see him?
So you guys are sleeping too. I'm taking it.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, nice. It looks like you.
A little bit.
Well, congratulations. And Kayla's doing well?
She's doing great. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent. Anything else? Okay, Justin's good. With that, I'll adjourn our meeting until next month and you all have a good Thanksgiving. Take care.